I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. And we'll keep in our thoughts and prayers, obviously, that brave and courageous people of the Ukraine. This meeting's being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a motion to approve, to accept correspondence in the Reed file. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum, now's the time for someone to just speak on something that's not on the agenda. First order of business is to vote to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and a grievance filed by the Whitman Police Union, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move.
Yes?
Yes.
We're in executive session, and we'll come back in open session to do the rest of the meeting once it's finished. We have scheduled meeting tonight, a public meeting with respect to the application of Sunlight Auto Sales Incorporated, Maureen Foley, to change the name of the business on the Class II Auto Dealer's License on the premises located at 909 Temple Street. If approved, take action to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License to Sunlight Auto Sales Incorporated, doing businesses, auto advisors and associates on the premises located at 909 Temple Street. So the first thing is the application of Sunlight Auto Sales. Maureen? Are you Maureen? Hi.
Hi. So, I'm Maureen Foley, and president of Sunlight Auto Sales, and I've been doing business in this town for many, many years. When we approved my license, I was working under auto advisors and socialists, and apparently the registry notified me that two things, the license said, I was reviewing my registration, they noticed that the license had the wrong address, 90 Temple instead of 909, so that needs to be corrected, and then they put a note that they don't rat the DBAs on the license itself. So I never really had a DBA on the license before all the licenses that I've had under Sunlight Auto Sales, Inc. The DBA was done through the clerk's office, and so it's just an error on the license, and I was hoping that we could just rewrite the license, go under the correct address with the correct name.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to do so?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I'd like a motion to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License with the wrong information on it.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Town Administrator's Report, COVID-19?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So briefly, as I have in past weeks, we have had a downward trend for almost first six weeks with one little exception in the week ending February 10th, but we have had a downward trend for six weeks from our peak of COVID-19 positivity down to 6.06% positive rate as of this past, through this past Thursday. So I think that's certainly good news, as the Omicron variant has trended off, and the vaccination rate in town for those eligible to be vaccinated continues to climb about a percent each week. Through this past Thursday, of those who are eligible to be vaccinated, it is 67% in town of those who are fully vaccinated. In terms of the test kits, just, I know two weeks ago, we obviously spoke about the more than 5,000 test kits, or kits of two tests, that the county had distributed to the town. We've been going full tilt in distributing those. As the Board knows, this past Sunday, there was our third drive-through distribution of test kits to residents. We were able to give out 270 on that day, so it did fall off a little bit from the previous ones, but we're still able to get quite a few out. We are, we as a town are further, each day, putting out about 20 test kits at each of the town hall, library, and senior center, and those are going out to folks who are coming into the building, so I think that's a pretty efficient way to get the test kits out. The test kits, we've also distributed test kits to all of the, reached out to all of the 19 early childhood and care centers and businesses in town, and certainly majority of those businesses were very pleased with that, and the remaining distribution went out to them this morning, actually. And we've also, we also reached out to, we, the Board of Health, and specifically Dina Amato and the Board of Health did a lot of work in reaching out to all the houses of worship in town, to make sure that the, that they knew that test kits, and we were happy to provide them with test kits for their parishioners. So we're continuing to intend to distribute test kits in that way, with, as I spoke about two weeks ago, holding back a certain number until May 1st, and then a smaller number until June 1st, so that, you know, I guess the question is not if, but when we have another variant, and if that happens during that time period, we do have some test kits on hand to distribute at that time. So that, I think, is going well. As the Board knows, as a quick reminder, two weeks ago, the Board voted to follow whatever the Board of Health chose to do, or chose to recommend with respect to masks at the Board of Health meeting a week ago today. It did recommend to remove the mask mandate in town buildings, and so, and the other pieces of the masks, I think most folks know this, but again, two weeks ago today, the State Department of Public Health removed a mask recommendation for most folks, but not those who are at increased risk because of health reasons, age, or someone in your household falls into these categories. Unvaccinated individuals, they recommend, should continue to mask, and this is again the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Public Health, and that masking in certain settings, public transportation, healthcare facilities, et cetera, continue. On Friday, the Federal Centers for Disease Control went back to saying that masks are recommended if you're in a zone of high, of high transmission. We are now currently, according to their guidance, in a low transmission zone, and that, but both the CDC and the State Department of Public Health do strongly recommend that if you're sick or coming off the five-day quarantine, that you do continue to mask at that, at that time. Finally, regarding masks, I think everyone and the Board knows that on the state requirement for masking in schools ended yesterday, and, and also, the Centers for Disease Control did recommend the, that the, that masks no longer be required in, I'm sorry, strike that, I was thinking about something else. So that's where we are at with regard to masks. I know the Board wanted to possibly come back and speak it about again tonight, but that's where we're at right now with masks.
Anyone have any response?
Just to let, you know, social tech masks, children are only required to wear masks on school buses, and if they're going into the nurse's office, or if in fact they're coming off a five-day, I think that's it. So social tech is going with the state as far as our kids not wearing, wearing masks on a regular basis.
And actually, that's what I meant to say, saw my note on it. The CDC did decide late on Friday that they would no longer recommend, that masks are no longer needed on school transportation buses, on buses, school buses.
What's the practice in our, in our school system right now?
Regarding buses, I am, I am not sure. I will find out. Certainly, it's not required in the schools.
As of the last meeting...
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
They don't require them on buses.
On buses, okay.
On buses, yes.
Just the nurses' office, and like you said...
Right, if they're off the five-day, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
I concur.
Okay, anything else? Okay, update on the sewer force main project?
Yes, so just wanted to pass along some hoped-for good news on that. So in addition to, as we gave it a previous update, the bid, the low bid, the lowest responsible, responsive bid, did come in approximately $2 million less than the monies appropriated, so that was certainly good news at the time. Another piece of hoped-for, and we're cautiously optimistic about regarding the cost of the project, is that part of the force main is going underneath an old dump in Brockton. Previously, the State Department of Environmental Protection had indicated that it would be requiring directional drilling, which is much more costly, rather than trench drilling, you know, not drilling, but trenching, opening it up. The, the town's consultant has asked to do some test borings to find out if it's possible that we could do a trench rather than directional drilling, and the State Department of Environmental Protection is considering that, and we're cautiously optimistic that because of those test borings, they may allow the town to go with that less expensive process to get through the old dump there, which would hopefully save between $500 and a million dollars in project costs. So certainly, you know, we're hoping for that, and that would obviously reduce the cost of the eventual borrowing, and reduce the cost of the overall project to ratepayers in the longer term, if it's approved by the DEB.
I have a question. Is there a possibility that some of our town employees, the water department, can do some of that work as far as, I know they cleared the area of the, of the foliages there, I'm wondering if they could do some of the trench digging? I don't know.
Possibly. I can ask, I can speak with Dennis about that. They definitely wouldn't have the qualifications for the directional drilling, if that was necessary, but I'll, I'll ask Dennis about that.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna just soon get it to our town employees, then...
Yep.
Where's the location of the dump?
It's just over the line, so the, the force main comes off of Auburn Street, goes behind on some easements there before the Brockton line, and then, and the dump is not right on the line, but a short, very short ways in to Brockton before it gets to the...
Behind Massasoia?
Drop-off point.
Is that the, is that the dump?
Between us and Massasoia.
That's where, that's where Massasoia was a dump.
Right.
Was it? Okay.
It's not a dump.
That's part...
They placed it on a dump.
So it's probably the same dump. It must be, it must be the same dump.
Yeah, 'cause there's a couple...
Or right next to it.
Salvage.
Salvage, kept two salvage places there for trucks.
So that's, yeah, so the, it's not directly the salvage area, but I know it's right next to the salvage area, but yes, all in that area.
Right by where your office was at Massasoia.
We could name it the Massasoia Sewer Force Main. I don't wanna go there, okay. Joint meeting with the Hanson BOS?
Yes, so, spoke with, been in contact with the Hanson Town Administrator, and threw her to the Hanson Board of Selectmen, and with Superintendent Simonak from the schools. So we are set for a joint meeting of the two Boards of Selectmen at the high school at 6:00 PM a week from tonight. The agenda will read fiscal year 2023 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Budget and Long Range Regional School District Financial Sustainability, and so we are set to go with that, with that night.
And it's, it's just a meeting between the two boards?
That is correct.
Are we still inviting Jeff and Stanbrook and Howard?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but it's not like a command performance, we're inviting...
We're inviting them.
As anybody could go, because it's a public meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, but if members of the school committee go, if they get a certain percentage, they have to post it.
Yeah, they, they, I heard just before this meeting that the school committee may have posted that. It's obviously up to the school committee if they choose to post it, if they believe that they'll be having a quorum there, but, but our, our intent is a joint meeting between the two Boards of Selectmen.
And there were some, I had some phone conversations, or some texting conversations with the Chairman of the Board of the Schools today, and he had some, he had heard that our intentions for that meeting and Hanson's Board of Selectmen's intentions were separate, were different. He had heard that the Hanson Board wanted a budget presentation, and I said that really wasn't part of our, our intention. Our intention was to hopefully come together with the, with the Hanson Board and come up with some common views about the budget that would help the school committee in their deliberations, is that?
Correct.
Is that still, is that accurate?
That is correct, that is correct. That's certainly, I didn't, I haven't heard...
We're not expecting Jeff and John to do a budget presentation?
Certainly not from, from Whitman. I haven't heard definitively that from Hanson, but certainly that was never the intention, I think, from the Whitman.
Nothing from Hanson about that.
I, I've not heard yes or no about...
You know anything about that, Randy?
I, I did speak to one of the Hanson's select for Lurie today, Laura, yes. Although there may be individual intentions regarding questions, I don't believe that they were looking for a full presentation.
But yeah, one of the things I had said to, or I texted to Chris, was that it would be appropriate if people had questions after they had seen your presentations before, to ask them, but I said, we're not, we're not, definitely not looking for a full budget presentation, and I, I hope Hanson isn't as well.
No, it didn't appear that, you know, they wanted the budget hearing revisited.
Basically, a meeting among, between us, between the two boards.
I think the superintendent, I think the superintendent should be there and speak on a budget that he, that he presented.
Right, and I think if Hanson's Board of Selectmen need to know about the budget, just watch it on YouTube. I mean, the cable studio has already posted the meeting, the budget meeting, so...
The meeting is on there, however, there were some questions that, I know I was there, I believe Justin was...
I'm not, yeah.
That questions may have arose, that, you know, my feeling is the superintendent presented the budget, he should be able to speak on what he presented. That regarding where it goes, as far as what the school committee certifies, that's on them, but a budget was presented that if he felt that the school committee should see that, then we should be able to ask questions about it.
Right, that's, that's different from saying come and present it.
Right, right, yeah.
There's no need for that at all, it's already been done.
I'm not looking for a full presentation.
Anybody else?
We'll be there all night.
My thought exactly, no. Six o'clock, okay, six o'clock, out to high school.
And only invited panelists will speak, right? We're not gonna, we can't open up for public comment and all that, or...
Well, we got a weaker side, huh?
Well, I think that's probably why we invited the business manager, superintendent, and the chair.
Right. Yeah, but it's an open meeting. We'll have to, we'll have to talk about it.
Thinking, maybe the schools are looking for direction of where both boards are standing as far as funding goes, and...
Well, I think that's our intent. Our intent is to give them an idea. We've had, and we've had meetings like that in the past. There was a meeting at the high school eons ago.
Oh, yeah, I remember them days, yeah.
They had the finance committees and the Board of Selectmen. And this is just, and I remember a few years ago, we were all set with our donation to, our assessment, and we thought it was a certain amount, however, between our deciding that and town meeting, the Hanson Board of Selectmen came up with a...
Different, yeah.
Different number, a higher number. We had to scramble to get some money. So we're trying to avoid that kind of thing, too, by having a joint meeting.
Yeah, we'll work together, so the schools know exactly where they can go.
Well, there's been so, so much conversation over partnerships, and we're all in it together. I'm kinda taken back that some people seem to think it's unreasonable that the two entities that fund this...
I left out?
Are not entitled to ask questions.
Right, true, yeah.
Were to meet, but we're okay, we're all okay. Okay, thank you. And we look forward to the meeting. Announce new treasurer, collector employee, Lisa Emery?
Yes, so just wanted to, as I have with new, other new employees in town, just want to make sure the Board knew, we have a new employee, clerical employee in the treasurer collector's office. I participated in the final round interviews with her, and I think we're welcoming her gladly to the position that had been held by Victoria Vicki Campenil, who unfortunately for the town retired, but we're happy to have Lisa Emery here in her place.
Okay, new business. Act on the resignation of Sezen Cacciatore from the position of Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals effective January 31, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the resignation of Joseph Cunningham from the position of Member of the Recreation Commission effective February 17, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Is that 2021, is that correct?
That's a typo, 2022.
2022, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Ryan Tully to be appointed to the position of Member of the Recreation Commission for a three-year term through June 30. It's not through June 30, 2022, is it?
It, so it's the remainder of a three-year term.
Okay.
So, so it, yeah, we could say for...
It's not for a three-year term.
For a remainder of a three-year term through June 30, 2022.
Okay, so change that to for a remainder of a three-year term, through June 30, 2022, in order to fill in an existing vacancy. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the resignation of June O'Leary from the position of Member of the Recreation Commission effective January 16, February 2022?
Correct.
Yep. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Act on the request of June O'Leary to be appointed to the position of non-voting Associate Member for a three-year term through June 30, 2022, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Kathleen Evans to be appointed to the position of Member of the Recreation Commission for a three-year term through June 30, 2023.
And again, I would say for the remainder of a three-year term.
Right.
Through June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
I abstain from that one, for obvious reasons.
Yeah, sure.
Can I, you know, can I speak on, on that, if I may?
On his vote?
No, no, not on his vote, but I mean, on the Recreation Commission, they had some issues in being able to fill at the board, so Lincoln and I sat in his office and made a few phone calls, and, and found some volunteers, and I thanked them all who volunteered, and I'm hoping now, in a couple of weeks, I forget, it's on my calendar, we're gonna have a meeting of the Recreation, I will be there zooming in, you know, the Zoom meeting, and that everyone shows up, so they can start the business of, of getting things started in the park program, and the pool program, they need to, and this is something that they've had a very difficult time in getting done, so hopefully this ends the problem, and right now, the Recreation Commission will come in and get the job done, and do the job, the great job that they've always done for the kids in the park. Hopefully, we got it done. I know somebody's wife is gonna be very happy.
She is, and it, there's a lot of, she's excited, and a lot of events in the works.
Oh, yeah, which is good. Okay.
Yes, Brian?
I just wanted to take this moment to thank June O'Leary for all that she's done for this community, between the recreation, the historical, Friends of the Park, and I'm sure many other boards and committees, she's been on for a long time.
Yeah.
And I wanna thank her, personally thank her, I know her, and I know her work ethic and what she, Whitman means to her, so I wish the best to her family, and, and hope that she can still find time to occasionally show up to this.
Well said, Brian, and well deserved.
Yeah, and another issue, Lincoln, are we going to change by law as far as an Associate Member, if not, if the board is not filled, an Associate Member, just like the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, can step in and vote, become a voting member at that particular time?
I would intend to include that on a draft warrant.
That may solve some of the issues that they have when they are starting to meet in person.
Okay.
Do we need, oh, do we need a motion?
I think we did it.
We voted that.
All done?
I think we did it.
Yes, we did.
Did we from Catherine?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Can't find the back end of my agenda.
Vote to rescind the following...
Where are we?
Vote to rescind the following vote taken.
Vote to rescind the following vote taken by the Board on February 15, 2022, to approve the request of Don Byers on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council for a three-day liquor license on Friday, April 21, 2022, through Sunday, April 23, 2022, for the Champagne Cake and Art Show, and to waive the fee for said permit. No, the license was granted, was, the license was granted for the incorrect dates.
Good. Motion?
Second.
So just to rescind that vote that we took before. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, act on the request of Don Byers on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council for a three-day liquor license on Friday, April 1, 2022, through Sunday, April 3, 2022, for the Champagne Cake and Art Show, subject to receipt of liquor liability coverage, and to waive the fee for said permit.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? This takes care of it, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, act on the request of Chris George on behalf of the Whitman Baseball and Softball Association to conduct its opening day parade on Saturday, April 23, 2022, beginning at 9:00 AM with a rain date of April 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good to see that again.
Act on the request of Chris George on behalf of the Whitman Baseball and Softball Association to conduct a toll booth fundraiser in the center of town on Saturday, June 4, 2022, with a rain date of Saturday, June 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, to consider the request to allow dear Officer Kevin Harrington to attend the 2022 Nastro National School Safety Conference in Aurora, Colorado, from July 3rd to 8th, and you have a letter to that effect, as to how it's gonna be funded. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, you walked in just in time.
All this, all business. FY 2023 operating budget.
So I don't really have anything too much more to add, other than what we've discussed at the last few meetings. The Finance Committee, as the Board knows, is reviewing the operating budget items, department by department. Just wanted to keep it on the agenda, so if there's any further discussion about it as we get ready here for a draft warrant.
Any discussion? Yes?
Just a clarifying question, because it came up at last week's Finance Committee meeting. Under the current proposal, there is no one-time money used in the operating budget, correct?
That is correct. That is correct, yep, so I know that's been a misconception out there in certain circles, and, and that is correct. There would be no one-time use of, there would be no use of one-time monies towards the operating budget under this scenario.
Okay, and the last item on the agenda is the ATA selection process, and we received last night a couple of job descriptions, one for Human Resources Procurement and Grants Director, and the other for the ATA position, Assistant Town Administrator position itself. And we asked Lincoln to come up with those two. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions?
Yeah, one of the, I already talked to Lincoln about it, one of the comments that I had is I noticed that there was no listing of schedules, you know, like working, five-day work week, attending all different meetings, but he said that will be in the job description.
Right, yeah, I did think that was part of it.
So, so we can put it in the description? I normally put it in the posting, but absolutely, we can put it in the...
Do you have a copy of the posting, too?
No.
No, I haven't done it yet.
Okay. Anyone have any comments on, this is basically a choice that we can make, whether to look for an Assistant Town Administrator, or someone who is specifically labeled as a Human Resources Procurement and Grants Director?
I guess my question is, which's more valuable to the, to the town? That's the thing. I mean, the fact that we have an assistant... I mean, um, the fact that we have an assistant town administrator, uh, first of all, when Lincoln goes on vacation, who steps in? Right? Uh, and also, you know, or if you're sick or something like that, who steps into your shoes for that, that time? Also, the responsibility of them making certain decisions and, and getting certain things done, like on day-to-day basis on what needs to get done, if there's questions that another department may have that requires your decision or something like that. If we don't have an assistant town administrator, who takes that position? Do we give that to the human resource? Is that part of his job? Or their job? I won't say his, their job.
Very good.
What?
Politically correct.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Well, I'm old fashioned. Old fashioned. Anyways, um, uh, that's a couple of questions I have. So I mean, it's whether or not we decide to go with the human resource officer or an assistant town administrator. And again, if we have an assistant town administrator, would they be part of doing the resource officer's job? You know, I mean, who would do that or it stays with, with Lincoln, with the, you know, the department? I mean, with the town administrator. It's, throw it up in the air and you see, oh, it comes out. That's the, that's the thing.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could suggest a couple of things, so I do think, I was actually calling some colleagues today to try and shake the trees a little bit more and get some more comparison points. And I do think if the board's intention is that um, the town would post a position at maybe a slightly lesser range for a salary, I do think there, it's, it's maybe possible in getting a couple of comparison points that if it is not entitled assistant town administrator, but is instead, you know, entitled HR director, you know, focused on HR director, I would suggest focused on HR director and grants, that, you know, perhaps if the board's intention is that, you know, we, we pay a little less, then maybe I think in terms of the market, we could possibly attract some other folks. We won't really know for sure, right? And until we get it out there, and certainly I think the notes of caution that everyone probably knows, but I'll just sort of s, say it out loud is that it's, I, I really do not believe, and you know, I think I'm certainly not the only one, that this is an employer's market. You know, it's, it's an employees, you know, employees are, it's the great quit, right, for a lot of folks? And there are more opportunities out there for people, and combined with that is the inflationary pressures that we all know about. So, um, but I do think in just looking at, um, for example, so, you know, different titles in different communities. But for example, so HR director, if just, this is just an HR director. I, I haven't been able to find any position that combines them in the way that we're suggesting here. But if we're just looking at an HR director in, it's interesting, there's, got about twenty communities here between Groton at eleven thousand three hundred fifteen people, they pay their human resources director a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars versus um, uh, you know, going up, I've got some higher communities that aren't really necessarily relevant here, except that. Interestingly, in looking at some communities with higher populations, so for example, was able to get some information from West Springfield, Burlington, Yarmouth, those are like between twenty-three thousand, twenty-eight thousand. Interestingly, some of those HR directors are paid a little bit less, for example, so, for example, North Attleboro has had a, uh, HR director there for thirty-five years who makes eighty-two thousand two seventy-nine. Now, I think that person is probably underpaid and who knows what all is going into that, but it does seem like, for whatever reason, communities in that mid-range, there are some salary points that are a little bit less than what we've been looking at for the mid-range for assistant town administrator positions. So, just want to give that data point out there. I do think um, I do think part of the, I do thi, I, I think it's true. I, I think with all these factors in, in play, that we, the town of Whitman, would likely be offering less than a like, um, or a very similar position in a similar community. So I do think part of the things that we, the town of Whitman, have some flex, possible flexibility on are some of the things that Selectman Salvucci was mentioning. So, giving the possibility of, of um, an employee working from home on Fridays. You know, because of the past, you know, scheduling decisions that we've made for, for, for the town hall, you know, as far as their folks working, but as far as the folks who are working here in person on Fridays, it's, it's usually just Mary Beth and me. Likewise, with respect, for example, to going to night meetings, if we were gonna dial it back a little bit and say that this is a human resources and grants manager position, then I do think, and I, and I would ask the board for some flexibility as far as this person coming to all board of selectmen meetings and other night meetings, because I think having that flexibility would allow us to be competitive when we aren't in a position to pay what I think perhaps is the market rate, or what in my opinion I think is the market rate. So that's some flexibility that obviously we want some feedback from the board on, but um, I do think that's one area of of negotiation that makes us more attractive in some ways than just salary. And I guess, and the final point, obviously that's, you know, that's a discussion point about who would be acting um, temporarily as the town administrator when I'm gone. I, I know, you know, certainly, it's something we could talk about. It's something that, that, that the board could um, appoint someone in my absence, that I could appoint someone in the absence with the approval of the board. You know, I think it's something when I'm away for a week, a week and a half, hopefully at some point, I think it's, it's possible to have that conversation at the time. So those are my thoughts.
Other thoughts?
I did some research with some of these employment sites and, and um, I got the sense that the national average for a straight human resources is, this was before the great resignation. And the problems we have in the country with employment was about seventy thousand nationwide. Now, obviously, there are changes on the east and west coast compared to the middle of the country. So, I got the sense from the majority, the vote that we took on the previous position that the board was concerned with the cost of an assistant town administrator. That's why I lo, I started looking at this and made the suggestion about this human resources grant writer scenario. And I, I do think that we could pay less than a town administrator. But based on the climate that you described and the localities you've talked about, I, I'm not sure how much less we'd be paying, and would we be putting ourselves in a bit of a pickle not having a town administrator, assistant town administrator? So I think it's a give and take as to whether, do you want to save money or do you want to have the proper people in place? And I think that's what we, we have to decide what the, what the real goal is here. Uh, we hope that you're gonna be around here for a long time so we don't have to slip somebody in to, that needs to be trained and, and go right in. So I think I'm inclined to, my vote would be for the human resources person. But I just don't know how much savings that would be.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things we learned during that, that, the failed search was that um, Lincoln, you, you were looking for someone to do human resources and procurement and grants. The major duties of the assistant town administrator were that. And obviously, obviously, we could, we could appoint someone on a regular, someone on a regular basis to act as the town administrator in your absence. And it could be someone that's called a human resources director or someone that's called an assistant town administrator. Yeah, I'm, uh, right now, I'm, I'm not sure. I've only been looking at these two things for twenty-four hours now. Justin?
I, uh.
And Randy?
Yeah, but looking at these, um, something Brian said kind of, kind of stuck out to me, um, because this is a, this would be a change from our, our past practice, you know, we've, we've had, I think, two prior assistant town administrators. And I'm, I'm just concerned that, I don't know, ten, twenty years down the road, if we, if we were to make this switch and wanted to go back, it may be more difficult to increase the scope of this position than it would be now to, to change it. And so if, if there's some future scenario where the town would be better served by an assistant town administrator, that may be a difficult transition back to.
So you, you would favor?
I think I'd favor keeping an assistant town administrator with, with a focus on HR.
The job description for assistant town administrator that we have includes human resources and procurement and uh, grants, and grants also.
It does, I mean, I, in my opinion, the, the work, I mean, there's a certain amount of work that needs to be done, right? And um, and I don't, in, in my strong opinion, myself and Lori aren't, two people aren't enough to do that. But, a, and, and I do think the natural things are the, the paperwork, you know, the human resources paperwork, the explosion of paperwork that that has meant, we just talked, you know, spent some time talking about that tonight. And uh, that and the grants, and the grants piece is sort of the building piece that we as a town have not been able to apply to things simply because it's a ton of paperwork and nobody has time to do it. So that's, I think, I think the duties and the pieces of work that we, the town, need are pretty much the same in both cases. I think um, the piece, in my mind, the pieces of the assistant town administrator position that could be peeled off to sort of make it, you know, maybe a little bit less expensive, um, would be the, come into all meetings, you know, possibly being able to work from, from home, making it more of a professional position than a leadership position. That's my opinion about where we can find some savings, if that's the goal, so. But I think the, the work, the day-to-day stuff that needs to get done, in my opinion, isn't different between the two positions.
There's um, if we were to use the assistant town administrator um, job description, that person would cover all the things that we have in the human resources.
I, I would like them to.
But you think, but would, it, it may be more expensive, expensive because we expect the person to be here more often? Is that what you're saying?
I think, and, and maybe the title, you know, maybe just the fact of the title, possibly. But, but you know, I mean, we have some data about human resources. We'd be asking for something more, right, from the grants. Is that right person who has those two skillsets out there? I don't think there's really any way of knowing without posting it, but um.
Randy, you up? You wanted to say something?
Yes, um, I personally don't want to get bogged down by the title. I, I think it's the qualifications that we need to, as a board, decide what are the, the biggest things that we're looking to fill. It's obviously human resources, it's obviously grants. For me, it, it is going to meetings, because I think there's a connectivity piece with other boards that I personally think would be better suited, like uh, during budget season. We'd meet on Tuesdays, FinCom meets on Tuesdays. I don't necessarily need the person, two people in this meeting, but it would be nice that, that, that there's some connectivity there, or not every Tuesday, Wednesday does Lincoln have to go to a Selectman's meeting in a school? That's important to me. I, I think management positions set a role by working five days a week. And we're paying for that. I, I mean, I, I, I think if the situation was brought up, not that I want to bring up the, the last candidate, but I don't know if that would have been my stance that we would have settled for less to work less hours. I, I think there's value in those days, there, there's value in the meetings. But as a board, I think maybe our next meeting, we, we all write down the, the things that, most important things for us in this position. And then if we have to come up with our own title as an operations manager or, and, and let, let's get the qualifications, not the title. That, that would be all I would say.
You think you'd, you'd like another couple of weeks looking at these two things?
I, I think for probably a, a more productive discussion, we all probably need some time.
If I may, how much the resource officer, right, human resources, how involved is that? I mean, we don't have one now. Basically, our, our, does the town administrator act as that? I mean.
On the, so right now, I'm doing it, but it, it, it's a challenge, right? Because I, my understanding, I haven't been here when we had an assistant town administrator, but the amount of required paperwork is a lot and growing even more.
On what?
With respect to Family Medical Leave Act, chapter one eleven F, the COVID requirements regarding.
Yeah, but COVID requirements are gonna be gone.
Hopefully so.
Right.
Hopefully so. The required sick time, that, that's a big piece, and, and the state law changed, whenever it was, two and a half years ago, regarding our part-time intermittent uh, positions and the requirement that they be allotted and guaranteed sick time. There, it's, it has absolutely exploded in the last few years about that, that level of paperwork.
But I mean, you're not talking about out of an eight-hour day, four hours of that and four hours of grant writing.
No.
I mean, it's not a day-to-day issue as far as human resources.
Depends on the day.
I mean, right, I mean, it, it depends on how many peop, I mean, you know, I mean, how many employees do we have in the town? I mean, do you take care of all employees, meaning the police department, fire department, DPW, everything?
I've certainly done paperwork for every single department, absolutely.
And as far as grants are concerned, I know that um, Bruce Martin has applied for grants for the DPW. You know, Complete Streets and things like that, uh, and got the town money. So I mean, he's, he's getting grants for the DPW. Police and Fire, are they applying for grants? Right, they're applying for grants. So almost like individual departments are applying for their own grants. All right, and so a grant writer, that, if we have somebody that's writing grants, that's sitting uh, in, in our office, would they be taking over the DPW, the police, the fire? I mean.
I, I, I wouldn't intend, in my mind, they wouldn't unless that department wanted help with it.
Right, because I know like.
And, and help with the reporting and everything.
Because I mean, how much grant writing would there be, you know, for the town, other than departments doing their own? I know Recreation, don't they go for their own grants too? Don't they apply? I know that Park, uh, June O'Leary used to do them for the uh, Friends at a Park grants.
The, I believe the, the appointed bo, appointed boards do apply for grants, but I think have been getting some assistance.
Right, yeah.
But I, but I know our technology director has probably gotten us some of the biggest grants over the past couple of years.
So I mean, so if we, a grant writer wouldn't be writing, they, in, it's individual departments are writing their own grants.
Well, they're pretty extensive, and it, like with the technology, I'm sure Josh would be applying for every grant under the sun if he had the, if he could break away from his day-to-day stuff and apply for those.
See, I do not know what's involved writing up.
Pretty extensive amount of, of paperwork.
And there are things right now that we're not applying to that we could. So for example, Mass Works, that's the grant program that if we amend, as an MBTA community, if we do some amending of our zoning, that we would continue to be eligible to apply for. Very significant grants for downtown development. The paperwork is literally like this. Uh, Green Communities is something that I know the, the assistant town administrator in the past have worked on. That is a lot of paperwork, that is a significant grant.
MVP is, uh, we're eligible for now.
And so there are absolutely grants that, that I, I don't have time to do right now.
Right, oh, yeah.
But we should do, but we should apply for.
I really don't, didn't really know what it, it was involved writing up grants. I really don't, didn't really know what it was involved writing up grants.
Well, so, and this is something maybe as a board we should think about and dive into a bit, that is another management position that we need, or is it some more administrative help?
What, a grant writer? I think, I, if, if I recall correctly, Lisa was responsible for bringing in a good amount of money to grants.
Couple of good ones, yeah.
While she was Assistant Town Administrator.
Yep.
That's something that we've seen to have forgotten, but she did.
And she was a procurement officer, too, she did a lot of procurements, and I mean, that's an important piece that we're kind of overlooking here.
Would be hard to find with an HR Director that does procurement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ann came to the meetings.
Pardon?
Ann came to the meetings.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of the, of the, the other person that we, we want to pay coming to, coming to the meetings, I do. I think it's, and working on Friday, I think is, you know, there are different ways to lead, and one of the ways to lead is to show that you work, and to be, or not to show that you work, and not to pretend that you work, but to work, to be there, and I, I think that's, that's not an, it's not an untoward thing to ask of someone, to be there.
See, the, the problem that I, I think I'm trying for us to avoid is to repeating what we just went through, because if we find someone and then we start to talk about the salaries, and then half of our board likes the qualifications and half don't like to pay for them, so I think that that, we're going to run into that same problem again. It's just going to be different players, so I think we need to be better prepared at what we really want.
We're going to run into the same problem again, as, as long as we're all not clear what's expected of the person that we want to hire.
Well, that's exactly why.
And that's what, that's.
I brought up the.
So that, that's why we need to be clear on it now.
Yeah.
So might, maybe it would be a good idea for us to continue this conversation on the 15th, and come up with a, with a, a common, a common list of expectations, and then it'd be ready to, then it'd be ready to post right, right after that. Does that make sense to people?
Could you get a combined person doing all?
Why don't we think about that? I'm asking for a little time.
Yeah, right.
Not to just continue the discussion right now.
I'm the same.
While we're just sitting here throwing stuff against the wall.
It might stick.
You know? Yeah, it might. Is that, is that okay with people?
Sure.
Okay, then, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Nobody motion, that way he can't say anything. I'll motion.
Second.
I could Putin us out of here if you want. Okay, uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We can hit the gavel now.
Yeah, I can.
There you go.